To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first order of business is a public hearing on the 2023 Harris Township operating budget.
The 2023 Harris Township operating budget proposes general fund expenditures of $3,572,527 and expenditures of $678,420 from the special funds. The budget proposes the following changes to our real estate millages: an increase of .3 mils for our general millage, which would raise that to 3.8 mils; flipping the millages for the maintenance equipment and special projects; new rates, uh, the new rates will be .2 mils for maintenance equipment and .3 mils for special projects; and raising the rate for fire hydrants to .03 mils. The budget was tentatively adopted November 14th and has been available for inspection at the township office and on the township website since that time.
Okay, public comment, anybody? Marks the board?
I'm going to close the public hearing.
Second. Okay, we're, public hearing is closed.
Did anybody come without objection?
Okay, uh, so, onto our regular meeting. First item of business is the approval of amendments. Some moves back.
What did you say?
Yeah, Paul, there's an out second. Discussion amendments. Comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving the amendments, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Amendments are approved. Citizen comments? So, anybody have anything to comment on that is not on the agenda? Moving on.
Um, first, we do have a public comment that we received.
Oh, okay.
Um, we received it via email and they've asked me to read it.
This is not on the agenda?
It was in your agenda packet.
It's public comments.
But the item is not on the agenda.
Okay.
So, we received several pieces of correspondence relative to the Hawk Ridge development and I've been asked to read this letter. Dear Harris Township Supervisors, our Academy Street community is disappointed to hear Mr. Songer's torn group is continuing to push for sewer beyond the sewer service area and increase housing density. Onlot septic is a perfectly good and environmentally sound solution. Household wastewater is put back near its source rather than into the rivers. If it was unsafe, DEP would not permit it. The technology for onlot septic is continually evolving. Mr. Songer's request is purely motivated by profit and not for the greater good. Township staff, planning commission, and the supervisors spent 10 years developing the zoning ordinances to protect the township. They determined this area in particular was one that was of high value and should be preserved. The congruent proposal certainly depicts anything other than rural and conservation. Furthermore, Cog General Forum spent significant time and resources defining the areas of our region, which they are willing and able to serve in a manner that is respectable to nature and our community. This proposal is clearly asking for an exception. It seems Mr. Songer has made a career of asking for exceptions and exploiting the goodwill of neighbors in pursuit of his own interest. So far in this project, we have seen him, one, solicit feedback on the very first conceptual plans presented to a select group of residents before the purchase of the property. In that meeting, he pledged not to proceed with the project if there was not support from the community. Clearly, there was strong negative sentiment, which was ignored. Two, he proudly pledged that the project was going to be of conservation design and proceed with the environment in mind and work hand-in-hand with Clearwater Conservancy in order to promote community goodwill. Since that point, rather than remove invasive species from the property, a wholesale mowing and clearing, clear-cut practice has been completed. The property is totally clear of the significant wildlife habitat and hundreds of high-value trees that the environment and community benefited from. His contractor has done a horrible job with erosion and sediment control, which the Center County Conservation District has noted the violations with Songer and E.B. Construction. Three, his very recent request of piping the stream traversing the project in hope to eliminate the repairing buffer on a building lot is totally egregious and not consistent with his prior statements regarding his commitment to the environment and the community. From a safety perspective, the new development is required to have sidewalks on both sides of the road. As you know, Academy Street lacks sidewalks in a standard width road. Already, pedestrian and vehicular traffic has doubled or tripled, and heavy equipment traffic has been unprecedented. No further increases can be borne by the street. We demand that the supervisors strike down any exceptions requested by Mr. Songer. Furthermore, Mr. Songer needs to be held accountable for the degradation of, to asphalt surface of Academy Street and fulfill the obligatory payment plus penalties and interest to the township in lieu of providing the park space as depicted in the original subdivision agreement. It hardly seems Mr. Songer is a Renaissance man depicted in town and gown. He should not be treated or regarded as such. Sincerely and respectfully submitted Eric Allen.
Any comments from the board?
Nope.
All right. Citizen comment noted. Next item is new agenda items. I'll, I'll note that item 5C, um, is just going to include Mr. Igo's report. We're going to push back until he arrives.
Yes.
So, on with 5A, shared parking regulations.
Okay, so, one of the recommendations from the village parking study was to extend the allowable length for shared parking required on village zone lots from 66 feet to 1,000 feet on properties located in either the village or the village commercial zoning district. The board reviewed draft language in September. Staff noted at the time that the township does not have a fully developed pedestrian network, which means we could potentially be allowing properties to locate required parking on other properties that are not accessible by a sidewalk or shared-use path and which have no street lighting. This could create an unsafe condition for pedestrians using the shared parking lot and could open up potential liability for the township. This is particularly an issue on the east side of the village where properties could potentially share parking with properties along Bull Avenue. The board ultimately decided to send this back to the planning commission for further review. Planning commission discussed this item at length at their October meeting. They did not feel that there was a need to change the length from 1,000 feet. They also suggested that providing pedestrian access should be the responsibility of the property owners involved in the agreement. And we included a copy of the minutes from those meeting, from that meeting, so you can see what they said. Um, so, tonight, we're going to ask you to review the, um, language in the draft ordinance and we have a couple of questions that need to be answered. Should the, uh, shared parking distance be kept at 1,000 feet? Should providing pedestrian access be the responsibility of the property owners that will be sharing the parking? And should the ordinance include any kind of language that indicates who's responsible? Uh, should pedestrian access be defined in the ordinance? And a definition would, that could specify if sidewalks or a shared-use path, um, are acceptable. It could also address concerns with street lighting. Our current ordinance does not define how this access is to be provided. So, we did give you some draft language in the packet, um, but we wanted to start having this discussion. We do have two members of the village parking committee here, uh, as well.
So, let's start with comments from the village parking committee. Um, public comment in general? All right, well, well, we'll get, we'll get started then and provide opportunity. Um, so, let's, let's, if you're agreeable, let's tackle questions one, two, and three. Does the board support keeping the shared parking distance at 1,000 feet?
Let me ask a question.
Sure.
Top paragraph, potentially shared parking.
Mute.
The top paragraph, potentially shared parking with properties along Bull Avenue. I'm having trouble visualizing that. Shared parking on Bull Avenue. Okay, a map.
So, they're on the.
Figure out how to share this.
Oh, fair enough.
I think I saw the question up there, it disappeared.
There's a limited opportunity, so, that yellow, um, the yellow plus signs that are on the map are showing, uh, a starting point and then the blue is zero to 500 feet, the yellow is 500 to 750, and then the red is 750 to 1,000. So, right here in front of the township offices, you could go down as, you know, past the former beer distributor to where the car wash is, or up to, uh, the other side of Kelly's, basically would be 1,000 feet away from just the township offices if you follow the road.
You would be parking on Bull Avenue?
No, but you, if there was a property owner out there that had excess parking, that they were willing to let a property owner in the village utilize for their required parking, um, they could theoretically do that. The challenge is, how would the people that are parking down there get into the village?
Off-site parking or off-site parking?
It'd be off-site parking.
Off-site. So, they'd be parking at.
So, they would be parking on the highway?
No, they'd be parking at a property that has parking on Bull Avenue.
So, we'll use the.
Yeah, Kelly's or.
Like Kelly's, or the former bank, or the, the beer distributor.
Or the other, the vacant beer distributor.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to, sorry.
The, the map helps. I couldn't visualize how that would impact, how that would impact Bull Avenue.
Other thoughts, questions?
On 1,000 foot.
Well, I have a question. The green area is the current village district? And then, and the red is what we created with the smaria business plan, is that my, am I correct?
Village commercial, yes.
Okay. So, I guess my question would be, you know, we're, I, I'm assuming this came up because of the village district, from some businesses in the village district. I don't know that we've had an issue with the Bull Avenue, or the, the smaria business plan area yet, which it could come. But my, my question is, why can't we just say inside that village commercial district and not worry whether it's 1,000 feet or 500 feet or whatever? It's just, just as long as you stay inside the, the village district. I mean, that, that way, you don't have to worry about. Well, I'm just saying, but for, for the shared use parking.
So, just, just allow village-owned properties to share with village-owned properties?
The green area, the village commercial district.
So, take the village commercial out of it.
Whatever, but I'm just saying, that one out there, I don't think we have anything that, right now, that we've had any issue with. But instead of narrowing it down to 1,000 feet and have somebody out there measuring with a whatever, just take that green area and say, as long as you share parking inside the green area, you're good to go.
What's, what's the van down the, across where?
Here?
Where are you talking about?
Right, right here, what's that zone?
That's all village commercial.
That's all village commercial?
Yeah, everything in that purple, kind of reddish color is village commercial.
So, we wouldn't be having people parking there, walking across the highway?
Well, in theory, they could.
Theory, they could.
If there's, yeah, that, that is one of the, the challenges with this.
That would be Shawley's property.
Right.
And the Pizza South restaurant, car complex there?
Well, no, it'd be right there, the, the beer, the old beer distributor looks, and I guess the car wash is in there.
Across the street though?
Yeah.
When, when these, when these regulations were amended back in 1986 to allow this type of situation, but within 66 feet, it specified within the village or the commercial zoning district, which is what used to be along Bull Avenue. Now, it was 66 feet, and that was to permit the, the museum to share with Kelly's across the road. But obviously, 66, 66 feet did not allow, you know, as much distance to be traveled for this type of shared parking.
So, Frank, if I'm hearing what you're saying, you're saying, take the village commercial out of it and just allow properties within the village district to share?
In other words, if I, if I'm looking at that, I've got a green district and I've got, I'm going to call it a pink district, whatever that, you, you have to stay inside your district. In other words, if you want to share parking, it has to be inside your district. You can't go from the green to the pink. You have to stay inside that district. Because it's right there.
You have to know what your zoning.
That's sort of shaded section.
The shaded, the two shaded.
It would be, I'm a village-owned, I'm a village zone property, I'm going to share with another village zone property.
Green curving and pink curving.
Robin has her hand up.
Help?
So, Robin Brows, uh, my question would be, if we did that, just stayed in the village, let's say, I work at a basket full, Pam sells it, it changes use. Right now, we have four spaces, but let's say we're required to have six. Where in that could I potentially find two more spaces, because there's such limitations already? That, that would be the problem, if we couldn't go a little further than just in there. I think we have, like, if you include it to just that, I think we're still at the same place we were last June.
Maybe not a solution.
No solution, but, I, you know what I mean? I feel like we've spent a lot of. Time trying to figure that out, and if we do that without any wiggle room there, we're, we're still sort of in the same boat, I think.
We could have more than a lot of opportunities. Either church property is in the fire department.
If that is.
But if church and the fire department, this is how we always get confused on this. The church and the fire department are not part of this discussion. That is off-site shared parking, that is a whole other conversation. This is just if a basket full wants to share parking with, pick a business, the Wolf's Tavern Building on West Main Street.
There's.
Are you using the word "share" in a written, formal kind of way, or are you using it sort of as a, ah, it will do it?
Well, I think you have to, it's kind of both sides of the coin, because if you're sharing it, I mean, there's nothing designating that this belongs to A, B, and C, and O, you can also use D and E from this business. We have to be careful about that. But I think the way the zoning ordinances are written, that they're saying, like, you need additional space, where would you get that additional space?
Right.
I mean, I think we've all concluded through all these discussions, there's likely ample parking in, in the village anyway, but it's because of the ordinances that now might say, oh, you need seven spots. Well, two of those could come from outside, out front on the, on the Main Street, you know what I mean? But because of the way the ordinances are written, it impedes the ability to provide those spaces, I think.
And the formal definition of available parking.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Then, Denny, there's, within the ordinance language that's proposed, the property owners that are sharing would have to have an agreement that the township would review at the time of the survey.
But that was the question about formality. Are we talking about something?
Yeah, no, I think it has to have some formality.
And it has to be recorded.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
My question is, why are we throwing out the village commercial? Because, now, I understand your concern about crossing. If this were to be developed, it makes perfect sense. But, of course, people cross all the time. I mean, they're all, they're back and forth all the time, but.
Yeah, pedestrian crossing, sign there on the corner?
Oh, yeah.
There's a button.
But this certainly would give a lot of space where if someone was working in the village, um, they can have their workers park their car in this area, and, um, that would help relieve some of the problems for the required space. So, it's, it's something to consider, and as, um, Amy said, it's a formal agreement. And that's where the question gets to be on the lighting, the handicaps, should I even mention that word?
Pedestrian access.
Right, so, there, there are a number of questions still to be solved.
I guess one of the things we should think about too, like, the municipal lot here, right, will come online eventually? Is that correct? Next year? That gives a little bit of wiggle room there, but not a ton of wiggle room, right, for people?
And I think the municipal lot is being envisioned as more for visitors and coming in.
Okay, all right, so, not shared parking, right? Okay.
But again, that's a formality issue. Or stop the employee of yours parking.
Or a customer.
Or a parking.
Right, there's a customer, yeah.
Or a parking lot.
Yeah, don't just park.
I guess I brought this up, but I, I have no problem with 1,000 feet. I just, I'm just a little uncomfortable with somebody parking, say, at the beer distributor, the old beer distributor, and having to walk along three, Bull Avenue.
Nobody's going to do it.
Well, I'm, I'm saying, they, but, but they could. If we, if we pass the ordinance, they could do it.
Well, they can park there now.
But they could do it, but the, part of the discussion is the pedestrian access piece, right? So, this would say that there has to be some pedestrian access provided by the property owner. So, if someone's going to use the beer distributor parking lot, there has to be a safe way to get them to the village.
Which, which, which landowner has to provide the parking, or the pedestrian?
Well, that's the discussion piece.
That's a question.
Safety to find the sidewalks.
Frank's suggestion, including the entire district, the 1,000-foot suggestion, can we have both?
Include village commercial and the village district?
Village commercial or 1,000 feet? Whereas if you, if you, if you were in the district, it counts. If you're out of the district, but it's still within 1,000 feet, it still is available. Is that feasible?
Yes, let me qual, quantify that. I think that what you want to do is, you want to avoid saying 1,000 feet in any direction, because that puts you into the residential zoning district where you can't do that. So, you'd want to still say village commercial and village district. Because village commercial, correct me if I'm wrong, and Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, you're on the Zoom, but village commercial, you can do the parking there and village district, but I don't think we want to open this up for residential parking lots in a residential district.
But what you're suggesting.
Twenty-five bucks a month in my driveway.
What you're suggesting is that you could share with any village property, you could share with any other village property.
Yeah.
Or with village commercial, but only if within 1,000 feet. Is that?
That's, yeah, that's kind of where I was headed.
Okay.
I think that's what we discussed, and that's what we discussed with the planning commission as well.
Well, one side of the village to the other is about 1,700 feet, so.
So, it would expand.
It would expand it more so, but I think that might call into question why people in the village are allowed to share further with other people in the village than they are with people in village commercial.
If you're 1,700, what about, go West Main to the intersection? What's?
Basically, I, I took from around Tennis Alley over to just past the township building.
Way down the corner of the, okay.
Yeah.
And then we have the parking lot at the park. An employee could park at Blue Spring Park every day and walk to work, and it's.
We'd all be healthier.
That's two blocks.
Could we explore for just one second? Somebody brought up the idea of, you know, if you were to park in the beer distributor, okay, walking along that road. Well, I've walked that road, okay? And I think it should be improved. I've been very much an advocate of, you know, being able to, um, make it this, our township as, as walkable, and Amy feels the same way. So, why would that be something that is, you know, couldn't be improved to an extent? I'm not saying that we put sidewalks down or whatever, but we could do a macadam surface.
Right.
And I think Eric, isn't, isn't Eric Walker doing?
Eric Allen.
Eric, sorry. Isn't he doing a sidewalk?
He's required sidewalk.
He has to do a sidewalk or a shared-use path?
Along Bull Avenue.
Right, so, it's, it would be really a very, an asset to have that, some improvement there.
If he's doing a sidewalk, is that a bit more comfortable?
Yeah.
Yeah, he has to, because he's in the corridor overlay.
No, village commercial, actually, village corridor overlay doesn't apply out there.
Okay.
Todd?
If I look on here, the, the planning commission, it's like they, they made the motion to keep it at 1,000 feet.
Yes.
And they passed that one, so.
Yeah, we're suggesting, we add to that, your, your suggestion.
Would the beer distributor, if they made physical improvements to the building, be required to put sidewalk too? Like, like, like Best Ray Allen's going?
Todd, why?
Extending to the end of the red?
Change it.
Would that be his requirement?
Todd, why don't you unmute and answer that, please?
Yeah, I'm in the process of that. The, the, the beer distributor, the former beer distributor property did go through the site plan process, if you remember. They never completed it. We haven't heard anything from them for months. I've heard rumors that they've dropped out of the, you know, leasing that property. I don't know if that's true or not, that's just a rumor I heard. But, uh, we were, we were working with Eric Allen at the corner of, uh, uh, Main Street and Bull Avenue, coordinating his, uh, required sidewalk with, uh, the former beer distributor's sidewalk. And, uh, uh, you know, as far as we know, the beer distributor site plan's off the table now, so, uh, Eric, Eric is in the process of working through the logistics to do the sidewalk just along Bull Avenue. There would still be no sidewalk from Bull Avenue on Main Street until you get to, uh, almost the township building.
There's not a lot of sidewalk space at the beer distributor.
Most of that's entry and exit, as, as of those little section in the middle.
On the site plan they had, I think we had them show sidewalk where they could put it, and then crosswalks across where their entry and exit, and now, limited site.
So, do we have some consensus here on standing 1,000 feet, but including the, um, village district in it as well? Does that make sense?
No, no, okay.
Item number two, should providing pedestrian access be the responsibility of the property owners that will share, be sharing parking? And should the ordinance include language indicating who is responsible?
Wait, can I ask, go back and ask one question? I just want to make sure I have this right for the ordinance. So, we're keeping the shared parking distance at 1,000 feet?
Yes.
And right now, the language says, um, where is it? Uh, the, uh, in the village district, parking spaces may be located on, on another lot, provided that the lot on which the parking is located is in the village commercial district or the village district. The lot on which the parking is provided is, is within 1,000 feet of the lot on which the use is located as measured along the right-of-way. So, we're keeping that language. That's what you want to keep? Or did you want to change that in some way? That's what I'm confused about. Feel better.
I'm not sure what that means, but who cares?
Basically, anybody in the blue or green up there can share with anybody in the blue or green, or within the pink area, as long as they're within 1,000 feet.
So, for example, if I'm standing at the township building and I need some parking, I could go down to the beer distributor and share with them, as long as they're within 1,000 feet of the township building, if this ordinance were changed.
Or you could go to the west.
Or I could go to the west and go 1,000 feet to Duffy's.
Y'all comfortable with that?
Sounds good.
As long as we have a written agreement.
Yes.
It's in there.
It's in there. Okay, so, we're not, okay, thank you.
Okay, item number two, should providing pedestrian access be the responsibility of the property owners that will be sharing parking? And should the ordinance include language indicating who is responsible? I don't know who else would be responsible.
Interpret that to mean that if we did this, it would be the responsibility of the beer distributor and Mr. Allen to pick up the cost of the sidewalk?
Or it would be the responsibility of, again, we'll use the township.
It would be a shared responsibility with you and them?
It, that, it would be structured, so, I think what we're saying is, in the agreement itself, right, you have to have an agreement that says, I'm going to share parking. So, we'll use the township building. So, the township's going to share parking with the old bank building.
Okay.
So, we would have an agreement with the owner of, which is Mr. Allen, but the owner of the old bank building. And that agreement would specify who would be responsible for providing the pedestrian access between those two property owners. It wouldn't be a township responsibility to come in and put in sidewalks.
I.e. for concrete sidewalks.
Or, that's, that's the next question.
React to that issue with respect to sharing cost with someone?
Well, I, I think that's part of, if you're going to open a new business, you're not going to incur that cost, right? That's what it is. But my question would be, what would the probability be that you could actually put a sidewalk there? You know what I mean? Given the, the zoning of, or regulations, or the stream that's there, those types of things, does that impact that ability to occur?
It wouldn't be the zoning that would impact it. It would be the, uh, regulations, ADA regulations for sidewalk, and also with the bridge that's there. But, again, that's also where maybe a shared-use path could be used in lieu of a formal sidewalk.
Okay, so, that, that would count as part of that pedestrian access?
Sort of the next, that's the next discussion item for the supervisors, yes.
Jump ahead.
That's okay.
That ADA issue is interesting because of what's there now, and that concrete curb, and someone incurring the cost of cutting the curb and, and getting to that situation.
Yeah, I would guess the cost would impede people potentially being that as shared.
I think it would, yeah.
Yeah, and I.
And then we're kind of back to.
I should mention that.
Yes.
Uh, one member of the committee who lives across the street was hoping to use shared parking, and then when she heard about the discussion of the planning commission about that the property owners, owners would be responsible for pedestrian access, she said it's cost prohibitive. And I mentioned she could share the other direction. She doesn't have to go east, she could share west.
So, for her, how far west could be up to how far?
She's.
If it's kind of almost across.
Yeah, 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 let me just, I can give you a ballpark estimate here of how far Yeah, 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 let me just, I can give you a ballpark estimate here of how far that is.
She could also go to the rear part of the Cali property, couldn't she?
Basically, I would say it's just past the diamond, it's about 1,000 feet. So just right around there where Amy's cursor's at, it would be 1,000 feet.
I can't see us picking up the tab for providing pedestrian access.
No, that's right.
For private business.
And I don't think it, you know, rules out that maybe in the future, we might want to extend the sidewalk network ourselves if we got a grant down to West Main, you know, down to East Main Street. But I don't think that should be something that's like on our plan for tomorrow.
A hundred thousand dollars go across the creek.
Yeah, I mean, I would.
Right.
Yeah.
Nobody's going to.
No.
Well, then, then we're into right of ways and there's some other issues and especially out in Bull Avenue, end of right of way.
Well, I, I guess my concern with that part is.
That could be interesting.
We like, we, we encourage businesses downtown Bollesburg. And the businesses here are not corporate businesses. They're moving forward business shops. And that is one, one more thing that they stick these with. It's, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that. And, and why would we make them, they need one parking spot. Make them pay a hundred thousand dollars to open a business downtown? Something's wrong with this picture. Something's wrong.
Very uncomfortable.
Oh, Lord.
One of the things, one of the things is parking, you know, the initial ordinance was that we wanted to limit what type of businesses were in the village. So if we're going to go out now and say, well, we're going to, we're going to put all these new regulations in, are we, are we also going to say that we're going to allow these other businesses? Now, we're going to expand what businesses can come to the town? So, so, you know, that's one thing to keep in mind. One of the reasons we did this originally was what, and if you come in here and it costs a hundred thousand dollars to put a parking or to get parking, maybe that's not a fit for your business.
One parking spot?
Yeah, well, I'm just saying that maybe it's not a fit for your business. I don't know.
We made it not fit for your business.
Right, I mean, it.
It's, it's another stupid regulation we made. The business owners absorb it. It is really, I don't get it, I don't get it.
Is there any place, I am sorry. See, that will yell at me.
We need to take that off and carry it around.
Okay. Is there any place within this area that you can think of? If I have a business right down here and I want my employee to park elsewhere, I need that, a new, another parking space, is there anywhere that you could see somebody parking other than, I heard that, the front lawn, somebody said here? The front lawn? And even, that's actually something to think about. That's, that could be a problem. But anyway, having, it isn't workable at all. I mean, we all think immediately of going to the fire hall and the churches and everything, but as Amy said, that's not what this issue's addressing.
This is, this piece of property across the alley.
That's, yeah.
That, that is sort of a storage yard now for miscellaneous equipment, but something we bought years and years ago and never done anything with. It sits next to Logan Hills property. It'd make a lot.
So if you will, let's move on to.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
Well, that's already on the map. Yeah, you put that on.
So you're going to leave it, they're going to be responsible for it.
Yeah, yeah, so we're, yeah, we're, we're agreed that the property owners should be responsible if those improvements are going to go in place.
Okay.
Item number three.
Hold on, wait.
Okay.
Well, I don't, I don't want to make it so the property has to pay anything either. Why, okay, what is our concern? Let, let me back up a little bit. I got to get caught in this whole damn thing. We brought into this because there's two businesses that need one more parking spot. One needed one more, the other needed two more. Am I correct? We're brought into this. And we've got a parking lot back here. As I remember, if we had this parking lot full, we're within five cars, all we need right now. With, unless I'm missing something, we counted all the parking spots we needed, but though the people in town and the business, everything else, we're within five cars with this parking lot opening up. What we're talking about is making, possibly making someone put a few hundred feet of sidewalk or put a bridge across the stream and, it just doesn't matter, add up to me.
I think it's important to remember that some of the discussion that we had at the meetings with the village parking committee was that there's a need to provide some modicum of relief within the ordinance, within the, the parking regulations now. That relief isn't just solely going to be sharing parking within 1,000 feet. We've talked about it in that village parking committee report, they identified other opportunities such as the off-site shared parking, which is the churches, the fire hall, the township lot. They've talked about calculating, quantifying on-street parking frontage and counting that towards an off-street parking requirement. So you're not necessarily saying, oh, my gosh, this is the only thing you can do. If you need one more parking space, you better put in the.
Well, then why do we have?
Because it's, it's one, it's like we're putting a tool in the toolbox. We have nothing in the toolbox right now.
But that tool doesn't make any sense.
The only thing.
Nobody's going to spend the money to do that.
But there are businesses on the west side where there are sidewalks and streetlights where they might have an opportunity to share. And right now, they can only do it if they're within 66 feet.
But we want to go to 1,000 feet.
You're right. Our forefathers wrote this ordinance so that the Bollesburg Heritage Museum could share with the steakhouse.
They don't want us parking in the steakhouse.
No, no, that's where they came up with.
Simple as that.
That's where they came up with 66 feet. So when the village parking committee looked at this, they said 66 feet isn't really helpful to most people because it's very specific.
I'm not arguing about the 1,000 feet. I'm arguing about all this cost to put this in for one more parking spot.
We're not requiring them to do that, we're saying.
Well, then, how they can, how can they open a business if they need another parking spot?
Go the other way.
Well, then why even bother with it then?
Because, again, it's a tool in the toolbox.
Okay, that's another, another regulation. One more hassle.
It's, it's not one more hassle.
Oh, it's not? Have you been in business before?
I'm not saying that anybody.
You have an opinion of?
I'm not saying that anybody has to do this.
Well, then why do we even have it?
If someone across the street, for example, she has a lot of frontage, if we allow people to count frontage, she wouldn't need to share. She can probably get four spaces.
Then why don't we do that?
We're going to put that in the toolbox next.
We're going, you know, this, this reminds me of the barking dog ordinance. We went through five years of barking dog ordinance.
Oh.
And we had, how many, how many minutes can this dog bark before? It went on, 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 it's silly.
Nine minutes and 59 seconds.
Yeah, it's silly. Yeah. I mean, why are we, I, I know, I know your planners and all this sort of stuff and it makes sense to you. But what doesn't make sense to me is if I want to put a business, a nice little business downtown Bollesburg and I need one more parking spot, why, why, why can't we just say, well, okay, you're close. If, if you need that parking spot, you don't have it, then it may not be the business you want here.
But, go back, go back.
Go back.
So you need one more parking spot. So if we have this toolbox of options, so maybe this one doesn't work for you, but you have a lot of frontage out front.
Okay.
You can count one spot there and that doesn't cost you any money.
Well, we'll see, we'll see if it works or not.
I mean, I have this question in hand, is if pedestrian access is going to be expanded.
I'm not sure why we, why would we require pedestrian access?
Well, but my point is, if, if they want to do it that route, who's going to pay for it? You or them?
Well, apparently, well, apparently, I don't think either one should pay for it. Why would we require it?
So who would pay for it?
No, why is it necessary?
It was a liability issue for the property owners and the township.
What if someone parks, goes to the car shop and walks up Main Street here? That's our liability? There's no parking lot?
No, because right now, they're doing it at their own risk.
Well, there you go.
This is a legal document, this ordinance that says.
We're going to make a document, okay.
Oh, my goodness.
I'm just, I just don't get the whole thing. I mean, it's, it's, I understand that we spent a lot of hours on this and I said before, there's no real solution. I don't know why, couldn't we just say, if you want to stop business in, in the village district, you can exempt from those parking regulations? If your business has five cars, why don't we just exempt, say, put four cars in? Why not?
Okay, I'm done.
Well, tell me why we can't do that?
I'm trying to explain you're going to have a toolbox and you're not.
Okay, we love our toolboxes. Okay.
Let's, let us tackle item number three, okay? Should pedestrian access be defined in the ordinance? And I'm going to take the lead on this one because I think that if we have a crossing over an arterial road that's managed safely, in other words, we have crosswalks, why would that be ruled out? But it currently says you can't cross an arterial, if it requires crossing an arterial road, it's not allowed. If we have a safe crossing over an arterial road, why would it be a problem?
Yeah, that's probably in because when this was written in 1981, nine.
No, I think this was something you added.
Oh, there. Oh, okay. I thought it was in the old one.
No, it's in the C.
Okay.
But you see my point? If we, if there's a safe crossing, then it.
You'd have to define safe crossing.
Look both ways.
A signaled, a signaled crossing.
First thing you learn, get, ride your bicycle, look both ways.
How about, how about a signaled crossing?
Because we didn't have cell phones then, buddy.
Signaled.
Signaled crossing, yeah.
Okay.
Does ADA also apply in our house?
Yeah, it did come from college. I'm sorry.
Does ADA fit into that number three?
I'm, I'm not sure it does because most times you have to provide your ADA onsite. So I don't know that you could do an ADA shared parking. I don't know what that would be, if, if the government would allow that, depends, you know, because I think it has to be close to the, there's, there's how far it can be. It's close to the business. I don't think you want ADA 1,000 feet away from your business. I don't think that would go over very big.
You investigate that part?
Are you, are you referring to ADA parking or ADA accessible sidewalks?
ADA accessible parking.
Oh, so you're talking about the parking, not the, the access?
Yeah, that's a.
I didn't know if you were referring to like.
Actually, actually both.
Okay.
If you provide the parking, you have to provide the access to do something now that you, now that you can park there because of the handicap placard, you're sort of stuck if you don't.
I would guess that the, well, some of the sidewalks that predate some of the ADA regulations probably would meet them today. But I would think if they provided the ADA parking on their property, that would be the best solution because then folks are not parking 1,000 feet away and having to try to access, you know, from an ADA space down to the business, but.
Question, I have a question.
Sure.
Correct me if I'm wrong here, but when somebody wants to do the shared use parking and they, they, they apply for it or, does it come before us to get approved, the planning commission? Todd, I mean, where does it go for somebody to approve this and say, you do need walking pass or you don't need walking pass? Where does that go?
Todd, can you answer that question, please?
Well, I guess in, in general terms, if it's something that requires a land development plan, that would, you know, be the ultimate approval of the board of supervisors. If it's something less than that, if it's a site plan or it's just a zoning permit, that would be a staff level thing. We can write whatever we want to write as far as who has to approve accesses for off-site parking spaces if we want to. That, that'd be entirely up to us.
Anybody think further in this?
Well, my comment still stands, you know, if, if I ever had a small business downtown, like a shop or whatever the business is, and, and it depends on cars being parked, nobody's going to park 1,000 block, 1,000 feet away or walk up Main Street or walk up 322 if they wanted to go buy a bottle of salad dressing at the village, at your business. This doesn't make sense. But, but, but at the same time, they want to be open, they have a right to be open. And I don't know why we're, how that's going to help or hurt any business by not having that 1,000 feet away. I don't see how it's going to help or hurt any of the businesses downtown.
Because I think, I think what we're talking about primarily is not the customer, it's more the employees. So if an employee parks and they can walk that, they only have to walk it one way each way. I mean, it's, it's a quick trip.
We're making fun of employee parking, so we're talking about.
It's their off-site parking requirement. However, I think what Diane's saying, and I agree, you're not going to find that people that are coming into the village to shop are going to park in some lot that.
They're not.
That a basket full has, that's 1,000 feet away.
You're certainly not.
But Robin might park over there as an employee of a basket full because they don't have enough off-site parking for their employees. So it's not necessarily going to be a visitor, it's going to be.
They're going to require a certain amount of parking, no matter who parks there, employee or a customer.
Correct.
Correct.
If their employee wants to park there and take away from the customer, then that's not very smart. But if they want to do it, they can do it.
But when we had it.
I'm not sure why we're, I know, I know, you think I'm out of the tangent, but we're causing more problems than it's worth here, really. We're, we're saying, right now, there are three, four businesses that could not be transferred to ownership right now. If they retire or want some, because you don't have five parking spots, you have six parking spots. What if you only have four? What is the harm?
The park.
Other than it's, other than it's not.
It's my understa, it's my understanding that the reason we get into this is because of what ordinance says right now.
Right.
So, so, so what we're looking at is how do we correct that ordinance so we don't have the situation you're dealing with?
Why don't we make the village as a, what do you call it, overlay district or exempt district?
We're looking at that also as part of the tools.
There you go.
You're jumping out, you're jumping out of the toolbox at this point. You're, you're throwing yourself off the bridge.
I'm throwing myself off the.
Come back to the bridge.
Well, I know we have, I know you love ordinances, you just love them, right? And everybody likes ordinance. We have a barking dog ordinance. We have, we have an ordinance for everything. And.
Don't forget the chicken ordinance.
Well, we're going to get, we're going to get, we have chicken ordinances, we're going to get ordinance for everything sooner or later. That's how we are. And, and it's, it is disruptive, really, because if I want to open a small shop downtown Bollesburg and I say, look, there's not a lot of parking here, but maybe my business doesn't require parking. If my business requires 10 cars, then maybe I don't want to open the business. That's up to me. It shouldn't be up to the township to say, well, they can, you can go 1,000 feet away and pretend you have parking.
Could we clarify one thing? Are we talking about the village district and village commercial? Is that still?
Yes.
Well, I don't know.
Yes.
I don't know, I guess, I suppose.
That's all we're talking about.
That little, that little green area right there.
That's the village district.
What we're, what we're doing here is not further limiting businesses, but expanding opportunities for them.
Yes.
That's why we use requirements. We're not making that as worse. We may not make it as better as you would.
Why do we think we know better than the business person?
Well, we could leave, we could leave the ordinance as it is with 66 feet.
No, well, I don't have 1,000 feet, I don't have a problem with that. Or why don't we make it unlimited? I, I just don't quite, if you want, if you need an ordinance and I agree with 1,000 feet. If you can't live without an ordinance, if you can't live with something, ordinance they have to deal with, 1,000 feet's better than 66 feet. Simple as that. But then we're talking about having to pay for bridges across the stream and sidewalks and I heard what Eric is going to have to pay for his little 50 feet of sidewalk. I don't know, I think he'll owe me 40, 50,000 dollars until it's all said and done.
But maybe the person that wants to share, that has to build the cost prohibitive sidewalk across the bridge.
Now, why would we, why would we lay it on, why would we lay it on a business owner that is downtown Bollesburg? Why would we lay that, lay that on him because he needs one parking spot? You can use the parking at the beer distributor, but you got to put, you got to spend a hundred thousand dollars to put a sidewalk.
But maybe they can go the other direction where they don't have to put in any sidewalks or streetlights and they can share at Duffy's.
Maybe so, I don't know.
And then they don't have to do anything.
I think it would be something much simpler to exempt that parking regulation. Like over here, they needed five spots, they got three or four. They needed four, they, they're only, they're short one, two parking spots is what seemed[1546.83] only, they're short one, two parking spots is what seemed this whole, started this whole conversation. And the other conversation is whenever they want to sell a small business in town, there's no parking. If they want to start a small business in town, there's no parking, then they can start a business and hope that, hope that their customers will come. I, I've just, I just don't like all these regulations relating to it. If you want to make it from 66 to 1,000, I'd say exempt that whole corridor right there from our parking problems, parking, parking ordinance. And who is, who is going to be hurt by that? Then figure that out. Who is going to be hurt by that?
I think I can answer that one. If we, let's say we just say, okay, we're going to get rid of all, no parking ordinance, no parking ordinance, just park wherever you want. And I'm a business owner, and I have, I have right now four or five parking spots on my lot. I'm going, you know what? I could put gazebo's out there and increase my revenue. So I put gazebo's and have no onsite parking. Now, and my business gets real popular, and everybody starts coming to my business, and they park on every place in the street, and then Basketful has somebody come in and they have no place to park. That's the problem. You got to, you got to, you got to make sure that everybody is good neighbors and everybody can park where they want to park.
Don't you think that is up to the due diligence of the, of the business person?
Well, but you, but, well, okay, if she does, if she does her due diligence and she's all taken care of, and her neighbor does, doesn't, or does allow people to come and park-
Okay, who is harmed by this now?
It would be her.
Todd has something to say.
Go ahead, let Todd say.
Go ahead, Todd.
Well, I think another thing you need to think about, too, is the village zoning district is not the only zoning district in the township that has parking requirements. If you, if you entertain an idea to basically suspend or eliminate the parking requirements in the village zoning district, how many people in the village commercial zoning district, in the general commercial zoning district, in the industrial zoning district, in the other zoning districts where there are specific requirements for parking based on, for the most part, the square footage of the building, how fair do you think they're going to be feeling like they're being treated if they still have to provide those parking requirements, but the people in the village who run businesses don't? That, that's, you know, that's one of the basic tenets of ordinances. You have to be fair and, and you can't be arbitrary and egregious. So just to say, we're going to exempt the village because, you know, it's only one or two spaces, when that might be the same case in any, some other zoning district, is unfair and it's not defensible in court.
We don't know that, but. Well, that's, that's my comments. We're, we're making a barking dog ordinance out of this. When, as I understand it, it was on, this is on like, it tells three parking spots, but they needed one over here and two over here. And we're adding how many over here?
Well, that's a whole nother discussion.
Yeah. Well, okay, well, you, okay.
This is one piece of a larger puzzle.
I guess so.
In fact, we're beating a horse and it's almost dead.
Let me put on the table that we work on our parking lot, get, get the parking lot done as we want, see how that parking lot affects Basketball and all the businesses, the, the businesses across the street. See the impact of that lot with respect to solving the problem or creating a bigger problem.
That may be an answer.
Is it going to solve it? Because we have, how many spaces in this lot?
I have no idea off the top of my head.
25.
25, yeah.
I don't know.
I, I'm sure it counts good.
I've counted 30 cars here.
Okay, well, those aren't, those aren't lined spaces.
No, 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 I'm just saying.
He means when we do the parking lot and we have lined spaces.
If, in fact, that's reality. Let's get, let's get the lot done and see what the impact of that lot is with respect to everything we're talking about. Because right now, that lot is-
Sir, I want to make a point order here. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we table this because obviously there's a lot more to be hashed out here. We're not ready to, to move on this.
I like Dan's idea.
So I make a motion, we table this and, and do a little bit more work on it before we decide to-
I like Dan's idea.
Thank you, bud.
Yep.
I'm setting the table.
Okay, do you have some kind of direction on how to modify this a little bit, maybe get us closer?
Possibly.
Okay.
We'll work on it.
Okay. I think the township magistrate bicycle would work.
Yes, I think maybe we should do that.
I think the township magistrate bicycle would work.
All right, let's, let's slow down. Let's slow down.
I would like for this, um, doing something with the lot and it takes us to the end of 23 or whatever. Get that thing done and see what its impact is with all of that.
Um, in reference, just one follow-up question, Ms. Varkus.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. In, in reference to going forward, it has been mentioned an overlay. Will the planning commission develop the overlay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm just going to say, this is related to what Denny just said. This is what the sidebar was having with Mark. I think that perhaps what we need to do, because they're getting conflated into this anyway, is I think that we need to sit down and have a discussion about the off-site shared parking, the fire hall, the part, the churches, the township lot, and this, and that this ordinance should encapsulate all of that, so that we have, because the township parking lot's going to be great. I'm very excited about it, except when we have someone who has a rental with no off-site parking and they park there for six months and then I'm annoyed because I've got to go out and-
Well, I think, I think those things we can work out.
Yes, so those are the regulations that we probably need to think about. So let's do some more work on this. Yes.
I would just, I know it's a lot of work and we'd be happy to do that. This has been like a long time. And I, my biggest concern is that when people want to come in and open up a small business, they're not coming because they can't, we haven't defined this yet, and it's impeded some development there, which in turn helps like our small businesses. The more people that can come in, the better for all of us, I think. Because people say all the time, I can't believe this cute little village doesn't have more than this. But, and I mean, part of it, it's double-sided. It's not just the parking that keeps it, it's people's desire to open a business. But you don't want to keep throwing roadblocks in front of those people that do have a desire to come in.
I'm taking the roadblock and saying, let's open that roadblock.
Yeah, yeah.
See what it looks like, move on.
Great.
Thank you. Are we done with this item? Okay.
I would guess. Table.
Yes, we did, yeah. All those favor tableing?
Table, yeah, aye, aye, aye.
Okay, 5B, 800 millihertz radio replacement.
So our 800 megahertz radios are reaching the end of their useful life. Donnie contacted Center Communications, who submitted a quote to replace all seven of our radios, including the battery backups that we need, for $12,592. They'll program the radios with the county templates, so our radios will be fully compatible. I talked to our finance manager, Mr. Miller, and moving forward, we've agreed that we're going to add the radios on to our capital equipment schedule because they are a piece of major equipment for us. Well, we'll order, the radios are in stock right now at Center Communications, so if you guys approve this tonight, we'll sign and get this ready to go.
I'm glad to see there's a three-year warranty. I made a comment on that and then read the warranty issue, so.
We're still at 800?
Yeah, everybody in the county is still at 800.
So we need a motion on this?
Yes, please.
Yes. I make a motion that we approve the purchase of the Kenwood NX5400 K2-800 MHX portable radios. Millihertz, that's what that means, millihertz.
Megahertz.
You think, okay, mega, mega milli.
It's all in there.
Oh, so that's part, okay.
I said a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Proposed Spring, what good timing.
Perfect.
Proposed Spring Creek Watershed Commission-
We just got to it.
Bylaw changes. Do you want to introduce this?
Okay, I will, yes. The Spring Creek Watershed Commission is considering several, several bylaw changes. These changes are intended to address issues with the membership on the commission as well as clarify meeting procedures and officer rules. The original bylaws were approved in 2008. The biggest change proposed in the bylaws is a change to who can hold office in the commission. Currently, the chair and vice chair must be elected officials from the participating municipalities. The proposed revisions allow for officers to be either an elected official or an alternate member from a municipality. This change was necessitated due to dwindling participation by elected officials on the commission. Mr. Bob Igoe, who is the hardest working member of the Spring Creek Watershed Commission, and our representative, is here to discuss the bylaws changed with the board. The commission's asking us to write any comments by January 18th. And one thing we need to do January 3rd when we do our appointments, Mr. Igoe can continue on as our alternate, but since he is not an elected official, we need to appoint an elected official. But I think this is one of these things where you appoint the elected official, but you allow Mr. Igoe to continue on if he's willing to do the work. Okay, take it away, Bob. You can come sit here if you want. Sit next to me.
My back, appreciate it. So, I don't know quite where to start with this. In 2021, the Watershed Commission decided to move ahead. They'd completed phase two of their mission. Phase one came out in the 1996 through Denny, probably 2007, I think. Yeah, oh, yeah, a couple of years ago. And in that phase one, they, I think, pretty much the culmination of phase one was an intermunicipality agreement with, with the 12 municipalities of the watershed. That's, they all agreed that they were going to participate. They agreed on, you know, providing some funding, which is 10 cents a head, you know, in your population. And they decided to continue to move forward. In 2017, they started work on what was called the Phase Two Project, which was wrapped up in 2018, 2019. In 2018, they had three major community events, basic listening sessions, and they developed really the Phase Two paper, project paper. And with the, the output of that was to be Phase Three, which is really the implementation with the recommendations that came out of Phase Two. Phase Three was approved in, in May, and we started work on it in, right after that. I am, myself, Jim Lanning out of Benner, and Kevin Abbey out of Ferguson are probably the three primary people working on the Phase Three project right now, putting it together. And what we're doing is we're building out committees, we're looking at funding, doing an awful lot of outreach from the 12 municipalities, from Potter down to Milesburg. While we were doing that, we recognized what was going on with the governance of the Watershed Commission. As Amy stated, we looked around and we really didn't, with Paul and Joanne leaving the commission, we were going to be without leaders. And we recognized that was a significant weakness in, in the bylaws, because we're depending on people like yourselves making a strong commitment to lead the organization. So we started down the revisions of the bylaws. We looked at the intermunicipality agreement and decided, well, we probably ought to be even more aligned with that and make sure that the two line up. And there were some other things we needed to change. Roll the treasurer, there's some reporting things that we're supposed to be doing, reporting out to our municipalities that we've been a little bit fuzzy on. I think COVID kind of threw a curve ball in it, everything, and slowed the progress down. And what we've been doing over the last couple of months, aside from putting together the Phase Three, is working on the governance. And we're going to be, we proposed the bylaw changes. It's a two-step process for the Watershed Commission. The first step is having, actually approaching the commission and say, can we approve these? Are we willing to address it? We had 10 of the 12 members at that meeting, and all 10 said, yes, we're, we're ready to go. The intermunicipality agreement gives us full authority to change our bylaws and manage our bylaws. So we're going to be headed down that path. We've got, we're aligned there. So in January, we're going to be reorganizing. We're looking for people who've gone out across the watershed, and we'll have representatives elected, we're certain we'll have elected representatives from Balfont, from the lower portion of the watershed. So I'm pretty optimistic about where we're at and what's been going on. The Watershed Commission has a lot to be proud of. The Atlas Project, I don't know if you've ever gone out and looked at the website, the Atlas Project is just a wonderful repository of some really good information about Spring Creek. So if you have some time to take a look at that, that's, that's worthwhile.
If you just look up Atlas Project?
Uh, well, Atlas Project would do that, but if you've looked at the Spring Creek Watershed Commission website, you'll find it out there and you may, and you'll see where the Atlas Project is out there. But, Denny, I'm- Yes.
Respected Fisher person.
Yes. So, I think that's, those are the highlights from where we're at. Like I said, right now, we're in the process of continuing to build out committees. We're working with leadership in, set from Center County on planning and COG. And so we're bringing together a lot of different people who seem to be pretty enthusiastic about where the, the new direction of the Watershed Commission.
Let me make a suggestion. You and I talked about this a little bit. The section one, red, pardon, something's missing with respect to an elected person. I think that should read, officers can either be, one, an elected person, an appointed member of a governing body, or an alternate. You've, by not including elected, you've basically excluded them from being chair or vice chair.
Okay.
I think he wants to-
I think that, I think that's important.
Appointed to elected.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that, you, we talked about that over coffee a little bit.
Yes.
My other concern, and not particularly about that section, the potential for losing members. I'm, I'm not sure it's a political issue rather than a territorial issue. And, you know, there are a couple municipalities that come to mind that, that would fit under that category. I hope that somehow you can manipulate that to, to ensure that they're welcome rather than by de facto action exclude them.
We've done, we've worked, I think Kevin Abbey's done a really good job of discussing, talking to all the different municipalities up and down. We've, like I said, everywhere from Half Moon down to Spring Township. The only person, the only community we really haven't had a lot of discussion with was Milesburg. And Milesburg is, and the only reason there is that they, their representative passed away.
Yeah. Mr. Bartley was a wonderful advocate for what we did on there, so.
Yeah, but I, I think that from all things that we've seen and heard, Denny, is that the direction of the Watershed Commission right now is in a pretty positive-
Have you budgetarily discussed with the municipalities if, if we and they have the money in their budget to continue? That would be a black item if, I know it's in our budget.
Yeah.
Do the other nine or 10 have that written?
Yes, we're, we're getting, everybody's contributing. The 10 cents a head hasn't been raised as an issue. I think that Half Moon, I think Half Moon was, has agreed that, you know, they're going to continue to participate, and participation is making news in, like Springs. Every, like I said, everywhere from one end of the watershed to the other, people are, Balfont has-
Potter Township, we're okay with?
Potter Township seems to be very enthusiastic. At least their representatives are enthusiastic. So I, we're all really kind of encouraged. There's a lot of positive, we'll call it buzz, about the watershed and the commission where we're headed. So.
I'm impressed with Potter Township because they're very active in the solar purchasing, solar power purchasing agreement, which is the sewer authority. That's, that's the Seton Hall Potter. So there's a lot of positive things happening out there. I'm glad to see that. I had, let me look at that. Let me have another comment.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm, I'm, other than, you know, the changes here for us to look at and approve or like or not like, are you basically saying you'd like to have one of us on that commission? Or is it going to suffice to be just yourself?
We need to have, I mean, according to the intermunicipality agreement, we're saying change the name. According to the agreement, the municipality, the municipalities are supposed to provide an elected official for the commission, okay? And an alternate.
Okay, I will put something out for thought for the, for us for our January 3rd meeting, is that we designate every year our vice chairman to sit on that, to sit on that committee. To sit on that watershed. Whoever, whoever comes up, yeah, we rotate, whoever comes up that year.
And then we have the strong alternate.
And then an alternate. So that's something for consideration, that we just have the vice chair do it every year, unless somebody wants to do it, but.
That'd be equal distribution of agony.
Whatever.
I ran the agony for 19 years or so.
We're fun people.
I like, I like that suggestion.
If the fact is the same as sewer authority or water authority, they have to report to supervisors anyhow. We just, I don't know that would be any different.
No, we, we report to you.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know what would be-
Each municipality has the, the opportunity to participate in a project if they want to. You know, if, if there's nothing, we don't, we can't tell you what to do or tell, you know, anybody.
Well, I think it'd be simpler, I know how you're going to go. It'd be simpler to say, look, whoever you fact, is, is, has to report is a representative of the supervisors. And that's it. But you want to name, you want to name, like.
Well, yeah, and that's, that's per the agreement. I mean, the agreement says it's a supervisor. And I don't know if that's the nature of an intermunicipality agreement.
I don't know.
Doesn't have to be.
You said elected official.
Yes.
Isn't Amy the tax, don't be lectured.
She's the tax collector.
It's not how this works. It's not how any of this works. I don't get a vote, remember?
Tax collector doesn't.
All the time of giving Amy a vote.
Because it's tax collector.
Denny, have I seen more on this?
No, I think that the, the addition of that, that word elected in that first section is important.
Because things may change.
Yep.
It changed because I ran out of 19 years' worth of energy.
I, I think we use the word appointed because it lines up exactly with the intermunicipality agreement. But we can put elected in there just for clarification.
It doesn't exclude.
Right.
How many municipalities are there?
12.
So you have 12, 12 representatives and 12 lasts, 24 people?
Yeah, I mean, we typically get, you know, we-
Oh, I know, I see that, I've seen it on the, yeah, you fill a room up sometimes, yeah.
See, originally, Bud, the commission included two acres of Center Hall.
Two acres, oh, okay.
And the one far corner of the grain sphere. It included Boggs Township. But because of them being related to another watershed, they basically backed out.
Okay.
So basically we have a modification of the bylaws to say that the appointed, the appointed representatives can assume leadership and we don't have to have elected officials there any time.
Yeah. I'm not going to cry over missing a meeting.
We're going to, yes, we'll be brought in on that for January 18th meeting.
Our February meeting, we would approve it.
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
That's your report?
That's my report. I see you in a meeting again.
Yeah, good to be here.
See you next month. No, maybe not.
No, not next January.
Okay, 5D, Resolution 22-16, the COG building agreement.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 22-16, approving the modification agreement to the intermunicipal agreement 2001-1.
Second discussion. All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
My discussion, I'm pleased it went as smoothly as it did when it went to the forums.
Yeah, we voted, is that the one we voted off the agenda? Oh, never mind.
That's what we thought tabled.
Yeah, we tabled.
We got to be tabled.
Item 5E, Resolution 22-17, adopting the 2023 township budget.
I move to approve Resolution 22-17, adopting the Harris Township 2023 budget.
Who's seconded, no more questions?
I'll do a second of a question then.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What was the number of people that came to view the budget in the township, or do you know if anyone looked at it online?
Uh, no one came to view it at the township building. I don't know if anyone looked at it online because I did not get any questions asked of me.
Just wanted to make sure that we voiced it openly.
I think it's.
Thank you. It's a responsible budget.
You did a good job.
Okay, motion is second. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Passes.
Nigel's no luck.
40.
He's not feeling well.
Okay. Resolution 22-18, appropriating sums for COG programs.
Second.
Discussion.
Wanted to point out that with our commitment of $687,000, we're pulling down about $28 million worth of services.
It's, it's over 30 million.
Over 30 million, so. The value for 600,000.
Or about a hundred dollars, wait, less than a hundred dollars a person, right? I don't like that. Less than a hundred dollars a person?
Wait, what is it, 680 something?
Yeah, let's pay a little more, a little, right around a hundred dollars. You feel like there might be a couple dollars left. So we're, you're, we're, if that, you, you were, we're leveraging 30 million dollars per hundred dollars, per hundred dollars.
Good deal. Thank you, Bud.
Okay. Motion is second.
Yes, we do. Shut the vote on.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Resolution 22-19, establishing property tax rates for 2023.
I move to approve Resolution 22-19, establishing the property tax rate for 2023.
It's your turn, Bud.
Oh, my second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion passes. Resolution 22-20, designating depositories for Harris Township.
So move. Second.
Discussion.
No changes, correct?
None.
Which of those banks is our primary check?
Jersey Shore State Bank.
Jersey Shore.
Jersey.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no? Motion carries. 22-21, setting the township manager's salary for 2023.
I move to table this and that.
Second.
Oh.
Never gets old.
No, sometimes.
Sometimes.
All right. So the salary for 2023 reflects a 5% cost load increase and a 1.5% merit raise, an increase of $107,265.
Increase of?
And increase to.
Oh.
And 60 cents. Don't forget the 60 cents.
No, that's, that's parking.
Do we need a motion here?
I think we probably need a motion.
Bud, you're up. I almost dropped my table, actually. I'll make the motion that we approve.
I was going to.
Okay, go ahead, didn't you?
Well, I moved the Doc Resolution 22-21, set the township manager's salary for the fiscal year 2023, and my comment is in line with the rest of the municipalities.
And I will second that, and I just have one question for the chair, is, are these numbers in agreement with her evaluation?
They are.
Thank you.
We had lunch.
Oh, wow.
Friday.
What did you have?
We went to the Naked Egg.
Oh, my gosh.
Oh, did you? Okay.
There is local businesses.
We went for lunch.
Oh, lunch, oh, they were looking for lunch? Oh, okay.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Resolution 22-21 is passed. Managers report.
First of all, thank you for approving my salary, I appreciate that. I just have two things. We have to hold our reorganization meeting on January 3rd, and I'm asking this here because Cindy will be watching this tomorrow when she's cataloging the meeting. She asked us what we want to do with our time. We could move it an hour earlier to 6:30, we could keep it at 7:30. She said we could also go noon, 1, 2, or 3 if we wanted, but I don't think Nigel can make the middle of the day because he has to.
I would prefer 7:30. Same time, same state.
Yeah, in the past, we've moved it to like 5.
Moved what?
In the past, we had done like 5, but she doesn't have a crew available.
7:30 is fine.
That's good.
Sure.
Anybody have a problem with 7:30?
Anybody been passed a dinner? Nobody?
No. And then just one other thing, Supervisor Harden and I are attending the Patton Township Board of Supervisors meeting on Wednesday to discuss our concerns with the State College Area Connector Project. We're on right after the officials from PennDOT, so that should be interesting. So you can tune in, it'll be live streamed on YouTube if you would like to watch it.
And I'm going to sit down tomorrow and try to type up a bunch of bullet points to get Amy and let her add hers or whatever. So we can just, let, just take questions because, you know, we could be, I don't want to forget anything.
Well, the good news is Patton's interested.
Yes.
Yeah. The other municipalities didn't take my hard sell when I, hey, let us come too, so we'll see.
Well, good.
Okay, I'll.
Amy?
Yes.
Number five, the removal of the park, of the passing zone?
Yes.
They're removing a passing zone?
Yes.
Relocating it's one of the questions.
Remove it. They, when they remove it, they just paint it so it's a W yellow line.
So there'll be, there'll be.
We'll see what happens.
You can pass down anywhere in 45 all the way to the township board.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's right there in front of Hunt Ridge, right?
Yeah.
It's, it's right there where the turn in front of.
It's in the straight stretch.
Yeah.
It just happens to be in front of Hunt Ridge.
It's in front of Hunt Ridge.
It's in front of the, the exit from Hunt Ridge.
Passing zone should be removed.
Yes, we sent a request last night.
We sent a request the other month.
And the, the PennDOT is okay with that, I guess.
PennDOT studied it, they collected the data, they have warrants that you have to meet to do these kind of things.
But there's no, there'd be no passing zone at all through there then?
Yeah, I don't know where the passing zone started or.
I don't think there is one, is there?
They had removed further down, I knew that.
Oh, okay, okay.
Second question?
Yes.
How is the production of our no parking signs doing for Brush Valley Road?
I have a feeling that they were ordered, I feel like that's what the guys told me, they're waiting to, for them to come, so I will double check on that.
The problem continues.
Is he still parking out there?
Yeah.
Okay, I will.
Not seriously, but, you know, the driveway is full and there are often a car or two on the road, so it doesn't.
Put that up on the priority list.
Yeah. Thank you.
Item number six, approval of vouchers.
I make a motion, we approve voucher number 2022-11 in the amount of $580,387.61, and just to put in there that we, that does include one of our new payment, our payments on our.
Yes.
Building. Anybody saw that? Included one of our payments on, on the building, the last one.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah.
Is that the first one, by the way?
No, it's the second one.
And then where to go?
Did you get a second on that?
Not yet.
Amy, did you get a second on it?
No.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Vouchers are approved. COG committee reports. Executive committee, of course, set the agenda for our prior meeting. We also met an executive session to review the executive director's performance. Parks Capital Committee did not meet, Parks Government Committee did not meet, Center Region Parks Authority spent the majority of their time talking about the, the request for release of additional contingency funds. And in addition, just recently had a special meeting to spend the first chunk of that, about $30,000, for some water line, establishing some water lines, which if we can get it done before the ground freezes, gets us ahead of the game rather than behind. So, MPO.
Okay, excuse me, MPO did meet this in November 22nd. Pretty much had a pretty full agenda. We, we basically moved some monies around on the 2023, 2026 tip, which, what now that, I've been there long enough now that it makes sense to me, so that must be a different one. We got, CDA COG gave us a, a, a report on the Joint Rail Authority, which we get every year. Center Region Transportation System is doing a study in transportation for a development plan, and we had a very good meeting on the, last Monday morning. It was a strategic plan. The MPO has not had a strategic plan in I don't know how many years, so we are working on a new strategic plan and on where we should go from there. So it's, it looks like it's moving along. There was one thing that was brought up, and it's the county, Center County Active Transportation Plan. One of the things we might want to look at for that, Amy, and talk to Anne or any of them down there, is the Bull Avenue to, to be included in that active transportation plan. So that's all I had from MPO, and I can tell you facilities, appell, no update, and no public safety. I get through them.
Human resources.
Nigel's.
Supervisor Nigel is not on the call.
I don't think you've hired him badly lately.
Land use and community infrastructure.
Did not meet. Solar power, we, Amy joined me in a Zoom meeting with them. We had a good update on the responses to the RFP. We received four responses, three for solar, one for retail, and all together, it's nine different projects. Includes two potentials in Center County and one potential in Green County. The two developers were interviewed, and they were given questions by the project management team, and those responses did not come back. So we've sort of delayed things for, for a couple of weeks to get replies from the, the solar developers, so that was basically what we talked about. Amy, is that about what we did?
Yes.
Talked about?
That's what we talked about.
That's good. Thank you.
Okay, finance.
We had our wrap-up committee, will I sign my name one more time? We had a wrap-up session or critique, I should, a critique, and of our budget review, how we would change it next year or what we'd do differently, and there's a couple of suggestions that may or may not work, that they want to do. But one thing was brought out that, that this budget, according to the very first minute that budget came out, the COG budget is out of hand. Well, it really was not out of hand. It was, it was well presented by the, by the administration, they presented what they wanted, which was very higher, more than what we knew that was going to be, and I think even the director knew that was going to be brought down to a, to a normal size, start at 60 or 70 percent, and they knew that it was going to be brought down, so. And we talked about how setting guidelines or, or anything like this, there was no real consensus made amongst the, the conversation. Some were in favor of a guideline, some were not. I'm not particularly in favor of a guideline. I think it's up to supervise, up to elected officials to bring that budget down to where, to where it is respectable, and certainly has to fall in line with, with the growth in the community, of course. And we're, but my concern would be, and there was like five of us there, plus, that when we put guidelines on something, we're restricting the growth of the, of our, of our parks, our library, Millbrook Marsh, there's 26 separate budgets in this, in this, in this overall program that we have, and, and when you set a guideline, say, okay, you're only going to do 5%, well, somebody's going to get screwed because there's someone that's going to need 8 and 9% just to function, that means somebody's going to have to come down to 2%. So that, that was a concern about setting a guideline. I, I think that, that the, the administration with, with Joe Vigilone.
Vigilone.
Has done a great job, and I think that elected officials realize it's our responsibility to, to present a, present a legitimate budget for each one of those 26 tabs. So, and, and I will say this, I, I'm very, very impressed with our administration, how we, this last situation we had with, with, with the parks, parks, regional parks, and how they, how they, how they, they presented a budget to us and how they, they found some things that were, we needed to work on. So I was, I'm, I'm very, very secure, feel secure that they do a good job over there, so. And I'm sure we have, I think we're going to start probably next July. We talked about a fiscal year, maybe, we don't know how that would work, but we're going to start in July, late, early June, July, we'll start the budget process, I know it's, but that's when we will start in next year. So it's, so it's, the municipalities have a little bit more lead time than, than getting thrown in in October, maybe, or something like that, yeah. And what, I, I, I think it'll, it'll even out. We're growing, and we've, we've got, you've got to realize, our Center Region is growing, our demands are growing, we are, these, those are all, the, the 26 are quality of life things except for the COG, well, they're all quality of life in there, and we're going to, it's going to cost money. We're growing. Now, we have to maintain a nice level of growth in what is really necessary and what isn't, so that's, that's, that's going to be a, that's going to be a challenge from here on in.
I'll comment that each individual agency ought to put forth their aspirations.
Oh, yeah, well, that, yeah, well, they guess.
They should wish for the sun and the moon.
Yes.
However, there's only one, there's only one sun and there's only one moon.
Yes, exactly.
And so at some point in the process, it needs to be more reasonable, and I think that presenting to the general forum and saying, you guys need to pare this down, is way too late in the process.
Well, I, I think that, I think that, you know, and I'm not, I'm not the guy, I think I agree with Bud that you can't put a guideline on, but what we could do is, is tell them that, hey, we're going to put it on a revenue base, you know, that, that we're looking for a 5% increase.
Well, we talked about that, frankly, that, that is not a doable thing.
Well, why isn't it doable?
Well, number one.
Here's the thing, Bud, if you do, oh, wait, oh, wait.
We, we discussed that. We have, our, our citizens or taxpayers are demanding more from us in, as far as quality of life things and services, and I think you have to look at that. You say, oh, you're only allowed, you're only allowed to grow, that doesn't work. We, we have to decide what we're, how we're going to grow. We can't say, well, we're going to give you 50 bucks, that's it, you spend it, it doesn't matter.
If you marry what, what he said, and, and, and the revenue, let's say, we say, hey, we're not going to go above 6% revenue increase, and, and they put down what they want, and it's 6.5 or 7%, then they come to us and then we can, we.
Well, that's, that's right.
We have to vote to 6.
Yes, that's right.
We can vote to 7.
That's right.
But I, what my point is, is if we, if we revenue based it, we're not going to get
But I, what my point is, is if we, if we revenue based it, we're not going to get that 17 or 18 like we did this year.
Well, we didn't get it.
I know, but I'm saying it came, it started that way.
What did, what did you end up, we end up with a very good document?
I'm just saying.
And, and I think, I think they undersold themselves issue, and it could be, in later years, we're going to have some problems. They're, they're under, the library didn't increase at all, I don't believe, and, and so we're, some along the line, we're got, we've got to be careful. We don't want to under, underfund them because it's going to be, that's one of these days we're going to hit, but we're already, right now, a good example, we're spending $100,000 a year on rent to park our parks and wreck trucks.
I know. Oh, that's something, it's, that's supposed to come to us too, but when the facilities committee doesn't meet every month, we got canceled again this month, which I've, I've brought that up several times.
Yeah, I think, I, I think the facilities committee is going to be important to this whole.
It's very important, but they don't want to meet unless there's something to vote on, I said, no, we got a lot of other things.
Well, I don't know, it's, that's.
I think an interesting point is we need to continue to toot our horn about the good things we're doing. We have people moving into the center region because they want to. And before they do, they do a lot of investigating as to what's available. We need to continue thinking about providing top-rate services, and that's going to cost us, by the way.
Well, it's, it's not cheap, it isn't cheap.
Well, I, I had a gentleman in, in the band today that I thought, that lives at Foxdale, now came from out of the area. Him and his wife, been here about a year, a little over a year, was just, couldn't believe how many trails and bike areas, he's a big biker, and how many, how much biking and, and that they could do, and he's very interested in, in Whitehall Regional Park and, and what was going on on the other side, but Penn State with the Musser Gap program, so, you know, I, I agree with you that that's, we are a destination for, for.
Well, I, I think, and what's, what's nice about this is we actually are behind the schedule, and we're, we're probably six or seven years behind some equalness, equal growth, like, like if you take the size of a center region, a city or whatever it is, we probably are about six years behind on all of amenities, we're slowly catching up, but.
I, I said when we talked about the Whitehall Regional Park, and I still believe this, that we're always going to have about a $10 million loan out there somewhere because it's going to just continue, we're going to get one thing down, it's going to continue to the next thing.
Yes.
With respect to what we're doing intermittently is the important thing. None of us could even get close to what we're providing to our service, to our residents, without, without us working together.
Now, we started this discussion, I've been on the, I've been in Pennsylvania, I've been on the, the center regions represented the Pennsylvania Council of Governments, and there are about, I don't think, there are about 100 cogs in Pennsylvania, but only 50 of them are, are viable and, and I don't think even 50 belong to the Pennsylvania Association, and of those, we are the, uh, we are the, the ones that look.
Bell ringer.
We're the bell, bell ringer, bellwether?
Whatever.
Whatever.
We're the big guy.
We are, we are the model. And, and Jim, I don't, I haven't been with Eric yet to any of these because of, but the association did the limbo, but Jim and I go to these, if we would be the, we'd be the first ones, well, what do you, how do you do this? And Jim was actually explaining that, and I was, Jim, with three or four different organizations, one is form a cog, and we had, we had a little presentation about how you form a cog and how you do this, and it, it can be as simple as buying, buying salt, or it could be as simple as having a golf course out in Willie, West Virginia, they own a golf course.
I'm bringing that up.
Well, Willie, West Virginia owns a golf course. And that is part of their, that is part of their, their shared things out there, so we're, we're on the right track, and we, we fight amongst, we're like, we're like kids, we fight amongst ourselves, but that's some, but we still present a good package.
We, we almost bought a ski slope.
Well, it might still, might still be possible, who the heck knows?
Don't, don't, don't.
Well, I don't, I think there's a ski slope too much there, though. So anyhow, that's my report.
This is the discussion that's going to continue on. Climate Action Sustainability?
We canceled.
Good.
There's no climate.
Bollesburg Heritage Museum.
Well, they had their, they had a open house, Christmas type on the, yes, on Saturday. Soon it went very well, we had a lot of activities over there. I was committed, I was supposed to be in the, in the, what we call the powerhouse is where the pool table is, and I was unable to do that. Yeah, they're, they're, they're doing well, they're, they're on, I guess we're closed now, probably till the spring. There's going to be a lot of work done on the barn. Stan Smith, who's our, I guess, on what he's curator, whatever, of the, of the barn floor, which has tractors and everything up there, so we're working on that, it's.
He's unfortunately got to do that because he has a barn floor.